Are we ready? Okay, if we're ready, I'm going to call the Sherman's Committee meeting. For September 17th, and it's 6:35. Megan, are you taking notes?
Yes, I will.
Just one more question. Oh, no, you're okay with minutes. Amy takes them off the table.
Oh, because I was like, I didn't see Amy, so I'm like...
Yeah, she takes them off the table.
Never mind. Then we're good. You're off the hook, Megan.
Thanks.
Okay, so, welcome back, everybody. It's fall, we're already in full swing of things. School pictures are occurring or have occurred, so that's good. So first, let's go to community comments, if we haven't. No Mr. Leahy? No, you're all good? Great. Okay, well then we'll go on down to the principals' report, and Dr. Brown.
Good evening. Happy new school year. In my principals' reflection, I shared a very well-deserved shout-out to the entire faculty who...I wasn't exaggerating when I said that the Pine Hill educators have an extra pep in their step this year. It was a super enthusiastic, organized opening to school. Our students made great transitions back to their routines, or in the case of new students, into new routines. Our teachers were...I think there's a few opportunities this summer for collaboration and professional growth that particularly contributed to how poised and energized teachers were to come back this year. But I know you'll speak to the very dynamic innovation workshop that many DS educators participated in, but I wanted to give a shout-out to DSEF. The Innovative Space Grant that they funded allowed teachers at Pine Hill and across the district to work collaboratively to bring a new lens to how they organize and set up their classrooms. There was a ripple effect from the teachers that were excited to be part of that grant, and many other educators hopped on board. We decluttered, we feng shui'd, we considered new ways to set up most of the classrooms and office spaces in the building this summer, so it really...you know, at some point we'll get you into classrooms, perhaps even later this evening. As you recall, DSEF also gave us a grant to send six educators, four of whom were accepted to go to Teachers College this summer. So those four educators came back, and they're really serving as teacher leaders to bring a higher-level lens to the criteria that we look at in student writing, specifically in Writers Workshop. And it...there's a contagion around the research and best practices that they were re-acclimated with and all that they're bringing back to the building. I also mentioned that 15 Pine Hill educators, along with 15 Chicagoring educators, attended a week-long course the last week in June on responsive classroom, and they had a dynamic instructor, so it was a...you know, I mean, you know, having students and teachers in a classroom the last week in June isn't optimal for new learning, and they all rose to the occasion. There was...both with the practices that they'll bring back to their students, and we've been trying to model those practices at every faculty meeting since, and so we're having...just reprioritizing, making sure that student relationships and connections with students are the very important plate on which everything else rests, and we've really revitalized a focus on that across the DS schools, so...and I also would be remiss if I didn't make mention of the literacy specialist position. I said to Beth, I was half joking, but I said to Beth earlier this week, I said, "We've already...that is already money well-spent." Like, the proof is in the pudding, and we're in our third week of school. Jen Ryan at the literacy specialist position is conferring with every grade-level team. They're looking at student work, they're looking at curriculum, they're looking at pedagogy, they're...she's modeling in classrooms, she's coaching teachers, she's energizing teachers to collaborate with one another, and I already see deeper discourse happening with our teachers about student learning around reading and writing. Tomorrow's the Professional Development Day. Allison and Jen will be facilitating, helping teachers look at how we confer with students and all of the, you know, the high-level conversations that are intended to be going on in Readers and Writers Workshop, and it's really helped us support teacher growth in this area. And then there's a slew of back-to-school activities, and family picnic, and other kinds of activities that have been going on so far in the first 14 or so days of school.
Anybody questions, comments?
Just a question on the redesign. I know it's early, so it's very hard to know if there's any feedback from the kids on whether they are excited about the change.
I think you'll hear through the grapevine lots of positive feedback for students, and the bigger enchilada is helping our teachers be more comfortable coaching kids and letting kids have more decisions around their learning, and it sounds trite, but it starts with the space. The kids in classrooms where, you know, there's many classrooms now that don't have a desk for every child, and there's certainly a place to work for every child, but kids, you know, that slow shift that happens where kids are expected to have a little bit more responsibility and perhaps metacognition about, "Hmm, what does my body need right now to help me be an engaged reader, writer, mathematician, what have you?" And you've been in classrooms where you can pick a high desk, or a low desk, or a work area on the floor, or a stool near the teacher, or a, you know, something wiggly, or something a little more traditional, and how kids are sharing and navigating that without having, you know, "This is always well-seen," you know. I think it's giving students more autonomy and decision, and I...there's quite a buzz. The teacher buzz is really loud right now. I can only imagine the student buzz.
So I have one of my kids is in one of these classrooms this year, Claire's, in Ms. McKay's classroom, and I had the opportunity to visit in that classroom this morning, and it was really cool because she's showing me the different spaces where she likes to work, and Heather actually said to me, Heather McKay actually said to me as we were talking about it, she said, "You know, I'm really surprised, pleasantly surprised. There are no assigned seats in here. I kind of expected everybody to be fighting over the, you know, the really low seats, or the standing table, or the sofas, and they're not. They kind of move around the room and find where they want to work, and people seem to have maybe like two favorite spots that they go between," but she said it's been working out really, really wonderfully, and the kids seemed so excited to show us all the new different options that they have, and we got to, you know, the moms, we're all sitting around this, you know, on the floor, on these chairs that are super low table. We got down there, weren't sure how we were going to get up, but it was great, and I think there's a lot of enthusiasm from the kids, and it sounds like, I mean, in Heather's case at least, she's really pleasantly surprised with how well it's working in her classroom, so...so far so good.
And as for your end of June, that you all did the work at the end of June, I followed on Twitter, and I saw that you all were still working, and I was most impressed, and I thought it looked like you were doing great work, so I just want you to know that everything that you all posted, I was following along, and I appreciate all your summer homework that the administration and teachers did this summer.
It was a very stimulating summer.
I can tell. I can tell. It was a lot of pressure from the faculty. I thought it was fantastic, so thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, well then we'll move on to the Assistant Superintendent Report.
Great, thank you. So I'm happy to address any questions about my report. We had a great leadership retreat this summer, but I was hoping just to spend a couple minutes, I'm not going to go on and on about it because you all have been following along about the portrait of a graduate, but I just wanted to kind of tell you where we are right now and where we're going with it. So as you know, last year we had a 57 committee, a group member committee come together in this room over the course of several months and do research on what our graduates need for success in college, career, and life. And after much research, and much collaboration, and synthesis, we have a draft image, which you have in your packet. So we have identified these six competencies that we feel, you know, in addition to content standards, are important for our kids to learn and practice and master before they leave us. And that being said, we are now at the point where kind of a couple different things are happening. The teachers came together over the summer, we had 65 teachers come to a day in August, 12 of whom were from Pine Hill, to kind of do the same work that the Innovation Committee did in a shorter amount of time. So we kind of had the abbreviated version of what's going on internationally, nationally, and what does that mean for Dover Sherburne in terms of moving forward and preparing for the future. Each of the schools walked away with a trifle of board, which our Innovation Committee members would recognize as, you know, "Here we are in 2019, here's where we want to be in 2035, and this is how we're going to bridge the gap." So those 65 teachers went back to their faculties and shared those ideas, and now the next layer of conversation is going to be with the faculty saying, "Here's the big ideas, how do we make them reality?" And that will therefore inform, hopefully, the next go-around of the strategic plan, which is only a year away. So lots of great enthusiasm, as Dr. Brown said, lots of great ideas, and we have our work cut out for us for the next 20 or so years. So while that's happening, I'm going to be reaching out to the original Innovation Committee and asking them to join me in going around to meet with various parent, community, and student groups to share the portrait and our process and get feedback before we make it official, just to understand the research that we did, why we came to these competencies, why the image looks the way it does, and kind of, you know, again, the next steps, how do we get from here to 2035, to make sure that our kids are prepared for a future that we can't imagine. And while all of that is going on, we also have lots of what you would call early adopters or pioneer teachers who are either already doing very innovative, very cool, very creative things, or those who are saying, "I want to try it," and are engaging in professional development, whether it's around the use of space in the classroom, or project-based learning. We have four teachers going out to High Tech High from the middle school this fall, which is really cool. DSEF has been very generous. We have grants to allow teachers to travel to schools around the country that are doing cool things, collect some information, and bring it back, just as the principals were able to do with Finland. So hopefully those early adopters are going to come back, and just as you heard Jen and Allison are doing, they will present to their colleagues these cool ideas that are either happening in their own classrooms already, or they're stealing from other places, and then you'll see the ripple effect over time. And again, you know, kind of capturing and celebrating what we already do, and then adding to that as we go. So that's kind of where we are, where we're going. I'm happy to address any questions. If you're wondering about the image, Darren Buck, who is a teacher at the high school, is also a graphic designer and musician, and he did this for us. Originally, every member of the committee had developed their own portraits, and then tables of eight combined their portraits to create one, and those eight then were combined by the committee to something that looks like this, that I tried to capture, and I did not do a very good job, but then we gave it all to Darren, kind of with the rationale behind it, and he did this. So this is actually a tree that he sketched, it's a tree that exists in Sherburne.
That's right, okay.
You'll notice that the center of the drawing is a heart, and the Innovation Committee felt strongly that at the heart of all of our work and our mission with kids, we really need to be developing epithetic learners, and so there's a heart in the center of all that we do. We're grounded in the growth mindset, in that we continue to learn and develop over time, and there's always the "I can't do that yet" that we're trying to instill in our kids. You'll see our learner under the tree with a book, developing a love of learning, all within the context of the greater world as we prepare them for what's outside of the Dover Sherburne and Boston area. So that's the portrait. I'm happy to take feedback now, or as the committee starts to make the rounds around town.
Thank you. I think it's important work, because everything's changing so quickly. I hope colleges and universities are doing the same thing, because what an incoming freshman is doing, I think, from when they graduate as a senior, it's going to be a different landscape, so I appreciate you all doing this now, because the way we teach has changed, you know, sitting kind of factory-style just learning, it's not the way it absorbs anymore. So this is a lot to take on, and I think, you know, just keep it going, it's great. We appreciate it.
And I think it just from being part of the committee and seeing, you know, all the opinions and all, you know, trying to get these words right, these are just...
To distill it.
These are brilliant. I mean, I think that this has just nailed it.
Good, thank you.
So, and I think this is, I saw this early when I was going, I mean, this is just, the picture was kind of, I mean, everyone had their own opinion, but I think this nailed exactly what, you know, kind of checked all the boxes from everyone in the room, but I think these, and, you know, kind of, you know, reading, you know, it's, I really, it's awesome.
Great, thank you.
So, you know, so much pride, I'm proud of what, you know, what that group did. And you, you know, I've accompanied you before, an awesome job, kind of herding all the cats for our time.
Thank you.
What a stakeholder.
It was an exciting process, and it'll continue.
That's great, yeah.
It was the, it's the ultimate in synthesis, because when you have a body of 65 people or 60-some-odd people coming at you with ideas, input, to kind of narrow that down to the major takeaways, that's actually what we want our kids to be able to do, that kind of synthesis, when we talk about, you hear a lot of critical thinking and higher-order thinking. Synthesis or evaluation, that is the higher-order thinking. So this whole exercise actually models for everyone what we should be doing, and it's not to be confused with, you know, blowing up our curriculum and blowing up our success. That is not the goal here. The goal is to allow our teachers the opportunities to see how much fun and exciting it can be to shift the environment a little bit, to teach the material a little differently when you go into these innovative classrooms and you see different kinds of setups. That allows and encourages the teachers to differentiate, to shift, to shake up their instruction, so this group might be working on that, and that group might be working on that, based on where they are. In talking with Cindy Sidman, she was so excited to start this year, she really, really was, and she took such pride in setting up her classroom to welcome these kids, and really put a lot of thought into how she would teach this material in this new setting. That's really what the whole innovation thing is about. It's not about saying, "Well, we're no longer going to cover this content because it's no longer important." These competencies speak to what we think any kid graduating from our school system should really be well-equipped to address, and they should be engaged citizens. Anyone who doesn't think we need engaged citizens is not paying attention. We need citizens who are paying attention to what's happening in the bigger picture, and so this is just kind of a, something that can serve as a guide for us all the way through. How do we check ourselves against that? So if I were to go into an all-school meeting, somebody who's not well-versed in this might say, "All-school meeting, you know, music, and what's really, what's really salient here? What's, so what?" But there's a lot of engaged citizens in that process. There's the kids who are leading it over here, there's the pledge of allegiance, there's, which little kids are seeing too. Why does it matter? They're making those connections. It's really good stuff, and I can't thank Beth enough for this. It is, I think, I highly doubt people really, really understand how much work went into this, really truly understand, because she has a lot of responsibilities, and this was one of them, so I feel great about it. It's very consistent with what we have in our strategic plan, so another really important thing, we talk about kind of making school reasonable for teachers by not overloading them, but it is, it does feel overwhelming and overloading when things are coming at you from all different angles that don't connect or make sense. Yes, we do ask a lot of our teachers, but at least it's consistent with what we've said we were going to work on as a system. It's not all over the map, so this all works really nice, and Beth, I can't thank you enough, great job.
Thank you.
I also think it was a really good model for the community of the "We Are DS," like I feel like it brought life into that, because it was these people from all these different schools, different jobs, different towns, working together with a common mission and building consensus, and I think we don't get a lot of opportunities to do that as Dover and Sherburne, and it felt really nice to be able to be all on the same page.
Thank you. And it's okay if I share the plan for how we intend to capture all of this, so you all have the pleasure of sitting at school committee meetings and hearing about this and reading about it in the reports, and for those of us watching this live at home, get to hear that too, but Andrew and Dawn have been supportive enough for us to be able to do a video, so we're going to capture the process, both kind of start to finish with interviewing people who are on the committee, and kind of how it rolled out, the research that we found, next steps, how teachers are feeling, how kids are feeling, so that we can really show the community, you know, our focus on innovative teaching and learning and social emotional wellness, and so it can be watched by everyone, anytime, anywhere.
It will answer the "so what?" People might not always say that to you, but they want to know, "So what? Why are we doing this?" And I think this video will really capture that. I think it'll be helpful, and I think it will be kind of, it will ground us, and it will ground anyone visiting our schools or our website. They'll be able to get a nice synopsis of what this is all about.
Great. Well, that moves us to you, Dr. Keo.
Yes, so...
Your superintendent.
Yes, so I'll spare you the kind of recap of what we...
Which I have.
What we went through at the Joint School Committee meeting where I talked about the opening of school. It has been a really, really good start to the school year. I think there's a lot of excitement and enthusiasm. I do think it's in part because of the stuff that Beth has mentioned. I think our administrators having gone to Finland, it's an amazing kind of, that's a rejuvenating experience, I've been myself, it's enlightening, and you want to come back and try these things out. There's just a real nice feel in the system right now, so I'm happy about that. The, obviously, the triple E thing is something that people are concerned about, and I will just tell you that we are absolutely 100% in contact with the Board of Health in both Sherburne and in Dover. I know that we're the Sherburne School Committee, but for the folks at home who have older kids that attend the region, I am in communication with the Dover Board of Health and with the Sherburne Board of Health, and they are constantly monitoring what the Massachusetts Department of Public Health is saying. And it's easy for us to get caught up in rumors and misinformation, but just to recap, to date, there was one mosquito caught in a pool over in the Holliston area, that end of town, none near Pine Hill. There's not been any triple E found anywhere else in Sherburne as of now. The state has made the decision, they're going to spray this whole area, and you can get the direct aerial paths on, through an app, but if you go to the Sherburne Board of Health, all that information is accessible. At this point, that's the recommendation for the Board of Health, is to allow that process to take place. We're not moving forward in Sherburne at this time with any other spraying than that. They've come right over this building and this place, and it's not been located here. If anything were to change, we will change with it. If we were to sense that this is expanding or getting worse, which in fact, most are arguing it's not because of the cooler evenings we've been having, and the, you know, as we move later into the fall, naturally the mosquito population dies off, but we're watching it, and I just want to make sure that people understand that.
Very good.
So that was the first part, and I know that was not in my report.
No, that's important information, because everybody does have flash notes.
Yep, yep. And then the other two things I wanted to share with you, which I know you've seen, but I just sort of wanted to recap where we are in Pine Hill enrollment, and I'm going to ask Dawn to kind of chime in as well, because she took a greater look at it than I have. I don't know if you have different information than Nate, but, so let's make sure we're right, and let me just say, before we go too deep into this, this is a preliminary report. It's early. We do what's called an October 1 report for the state, because at that point in the year the state really knows that most of the ins and outs have settled down, but until then, they think it's kind of useless to kind of cite what your enrollments are because they're fluctuating. We still have kids coming and going, but right now, our, as of today, I do believe, no, as of when this was printed, we were at 386 students at Pine Hill. We projected 379. Am I right so far?
I had 378.
You had 378?
Based on our projections that were shared in the budget packet.
Okay, fine. So then, so we were, we were off by eight, and those were where?
But three of those were, so if you look at, so what I did is, we've been using those projections pretty accurately, and I'm learning over time, our three-year projection actually is pretty good. So that's looking at your ins and outs migration over three years, taking that average and applying it to your current numbers. So looking at that, between grades one and five, we were only off by five students, so our projection was within five of where we ended up. Kindergarten is more of a little different anomaly, because you're dealing with an incoming census. We had built your budget based on 62 kindergarteners, we ended up with 65, so that was off by three, which just makes three plus five gets you your eight, where we were missing, but that five being off is less than 1% of the total population of K1, of 1 through 5, so it gives you another year where we're feeling comfortable with our, using our projections to forecast out for the next budget year. Because that five, that little increase though, will then work into our three-year average for next year, right? So we've seen maybe a little bit more in-migration than we, the three-year average proves, so that will build into the model for fiscal year '21 when you start looking at your census. For the new members, just, I think it's, you have two different sets of class size policy here, so this is just a precursor for the budget set. So your kindergarten through three, you look at a class size between 18 and 23, and your four and five, you're looking at 20 to 25. Those are the guidelines in which we build the budget on, so we want to stay within those ranges when we're building how many sections each grade has.
If you look...
Yeah, so 18 to 23 is K through three, and 20 to 25 is fourth through fifth grade. And so just to look at where the grade, so kindergarten, obviously, we're up three. Grade one, we had four more first graders than we, the model would project, but second grade, we were three less than what the model projected. Grade three was one additional, grade four was like perfect, and grade five was three additional, so that just tells you the spread of those numbers, so it's some pluses and minuses that gets you down to the five.
Did you check, did you pull those numbers off today?
I pulled the, what do you consider?
The existing numbers of where we were for Pine Hill Schools enrollment as of today?
No, this is based on these numbers, based on what our budget was built on.
Right, so you're basing them on the numbers that we drew up?
On the numbers that are here, yeah. I would say in elementary, we see more shift between September and October at the region, because there's just a lot more students, and there's a lot more ways to enter and exit. These are probably turnout to be pretty close.
We have one new student starting next week in second grade, so your second-grade projections are spot-on.
Well, second grade, they'll only be two off then.
Oh, sorry.
If we read out for second grade. Third grade was the one that we were just hitting off, so that gives you a little feel, so that, I think, just hearing that information when we go and, when we meet in November to start talking about next year's budget, gives you a basis of seeing how last year played out to actuals.
But it also kind of highlights why it's important to trust us a little bit, because, and especially Dawn, I think is really, has gotten very good at this, we were hearing a lot of concern, the kindergarten numbers are going to be way over our limit, we can't handle kindergarten classes that big, and although they're not small, they're also right in the range of where we thought they would be.
Right, right.
Which is amazing, because remember, people were talking about all the new construction, all the houses on the market, 70 houses on the market, I heard, and so there was widespread concern, and this just goes to show that it's safer to lean on the numbers and the numbers first, and I agree, our projection models have really worked very well. I'm not going to take credit for it, this is Bill McCall of who brought this to us. It's worked pretty darn well, especially the, is it the three-year?
So we look at three-year average, the year, previous-year average, and then we take the middle part of that, so those are three data points that we look at, and we make sure that we can hit all of those with how we've stepped, so I think that gives you a good range. So the one-year projection for next year could be a little higher than last year's one, because you had more in-migration than out-migration, so that gives us a really good feel of what our potential census could be here, and then we hopefully build a budget that would meet all three of those.
While we're talking about numbers, I know this has, this came up as part of our discussions last year, what would we need to do as the Sherburne... Sherburne School Committee to think about or to explore bringing our guidelines into line with what Dover's guidelines are in terms of class size?
That is, I mean, that's within the school committee's purview to do that. I think that, you know, you have to, you have to certainly have conversations probably with the folks at advisory and the people who develop our budgets, because that would impact future budgets. And I think in the past, there's been discussions about this, and I think maybe some resistance in various places for that reason, that if you drive your numbers too low, some would argue that with two or three sections set at a very low number, it can get really expensive when you're running a section for 13 or 14 kids. And it's one thing when you're running 10 sections, it's another thing when, you know, you might, you might run, your choices might be 22 or 14. I mean, if you split 66 by four as opposed to three, suddenly have a totally different picture.
If you took Dover's 17 to 22, so their K through five is the same, and theirs is a guideline, I don't think it's going to change. At this juncture, it wouldn't change any of your class sizes. And I will be honest, like, if Dover had your fifth grade at their policy, they'd run it at the 23, 23, and 23, because theirs is a guideline. It wouldn't make sense to have four with that small of a number at that grade level.
Right.
So, you know.
It's a guideline.
It's a guideline. In Dover, it's a guideline. You guys, yours is a little more policy-driven in the way it's written in the policy. So if you wanted to do something too, it would be a discussion, but it would start with your policy subcommittee, would develop language to then do second read first read, go talk to the town. So it would start with your, it would come forward from your policy subcommittee. And they would probably do some research and do some initial discussions before they brought it forward. But I think that helps, knowing that if you looked at 17 to 22, I don't, if that was yours, I think you'd be right where you are right now.
Right.
The big challenge for us is that we're running three and four sections, and that's, that's really hard.
That's the tough part.
Because if, you know, if you're up against it, and you add another section, they'll all drop dramatically, which is nice. But if you could have just made it work, that's potentially $70,000, $80,000, $90,000. So it's a lot.
It is a lot.
And we, as we know, with Sherburne's budget, that's significant. And our total increases are sometimes not even that much. So it's, it's a big conversation.
Yeah.
But I agree, Dawn, that is the way to do it, through your subcommittee.
And I'm on policy subcommittee, so I'll get to it for you and give you some feedback.
Are you, does Sherburne have its own policy subcommittee as well?
Each committee has their own.
Okay, so you're not one?
I'm not one.
I'm not sure who the other member is. So then the other thing, if that's it on enrollment.
Yes. Unless anybody has any more questions.
Okay. So the other piece I shared with you is our new hire information, and this is pretty much our practice, just to let you know who's who and who's new. And you can see some, we do have some new people. In most instances, in accordance with our budget, if there's someone new, they're either replacing someone, it was a reconfigured position, in other words, we combined some, or perhaps eliminated one position and added another, but it was essentially a wash. And then we did, in fact, have some new positions. For example, the elementary coordinator was a new position shared between Dover and Sherburne. The team chair was reconfigured, because we had a team chair at Chicering, and we had a team chair at Pine Hill. We now have one that is shared between the two, and the trade-off was we now have an elementary coordinator who's an administrator. We do now have an administrator of special ed. So Naomi O'Brien is doing a great job. Kate McCarthy's fantastic as a director of student services. They have wonderful ideas. I'm sure that Allison and Barbara can tell you about their experiences with them already. Laura Driscoll, I mean, they, these three have really hit the ground running. They, I'm so proud of them, and they're making us look good, because we believed it could happen, and it really is happening. So we're thrilled with that. Carrie Campbell's working up at the central office as an administrative assistant, directly with Kate McCarthy. Julie Mahv, the BCBA for Pine Hill and the high schools, a shared position. She's doing a great job. Kevin Barry has become an art teacher here, took over for Sarah Richards. Kevin's already just having a good time, I believe.
He's a rock star.
He's a rock star.
By any student's account.
That's good to hear. He's, we knew that about him, and he's doing great. Sarah Fabry, just a wonderful person, is teaching in the preschool and doing some, we hope, maybe perhaps, some tutoring for us. And our speech and language pathologist, our ESL tutors, and our ed assistants. So we have a wonderful group of people that have joined us here at Pine Hill. We're really pleased with them, and we're so happy they did choose to join us, because quite frankly, we are in competition.
Yes.
Yeah. So I want to commend Barbara and Allison and anyone else who was involved in the hiring, because usually it's done by teams. They did a great job this year.
And the last piece, just if there's any fifth-grade parents out there listening, the last piece that we're putting in place starting this coming Monday is the fifth-grade educational assistant. That position was vacant, is vacant up until now, and we're excited to have waited and found just the right person.
And I also noticed, we may have missed others, so I apologize if we did, but Lori Ryan is now in a literacy
Jen Ryan.
Jen Ryan, sorry. Sorry, Jen Ryan.
Get the grapevine going.
I know, sorry.
We just hired our fourth Ryan to work at Pine Hill School, so you see.
Right. Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's going to make it a lot easier. Jen Ryan is now serving as a literacy specialist, and from what I hear, doing a great job. Did you already mention that in your report, Barb? Yes, thank you. And that's it?
That's it?
Okay. Dawn, the warrant report? The warrant report. So this is new for you guys, and this is a result of your decision when you appointed your representatives for all your subcommittees to only put one signer on your budget. So this is what you'll get on a monthly basis, is all the warrants that were processed, that your one signer went to Town Hall, not their house, kitchen table, and signed a warrant. So just to go over, we give you the voucher number, in case there's ever either a reason that you want us to pull it for you to look at, that's how we can go and pull it. It has the date it was processed, the total amount, and what fund it was processed against. So you have circuit breaker out of district, that's what that represents. General school is basically all your in-district regular education. The building fund, we must have had one bill to pay. Capital, so that's your whole capital for the whole year. That's the floors that we did. And then you have general out-of-district, which is your out-of-district expenses that you're covering in your operating budget, in addition to the circuit breaker. So those are the types of funds. Saw when is one of your gift funds. So whatever fund it's coming against, we will let you know, so you can just sort of tell where it's coming from. So this is a way to keep the committee informed about the expenses that are running through your budget without having three people go look at the detail. But at any time, any committee member would like to look at the detail, if they just let us know, we'll make that information available for you.
I think it's been easier. When I had to go out of town, had other, I got email, and we got it taken care of. I like it better, because they're in one place. And before, you know, at the kitchen table, we would make sure they were all in order, make sure everything was counted for, so there were little check marks. And sometimes you'd get little sticky notes going, "I don't know, is this to this?" And it's nice, because the women at Town Hall, I can say, "So this," and they go, "Oh, no, that's that." And it's wonderful, because my question's answered immediately, and I can make sure it's all corresponding.
And if anyone's ever at Town Hall, it's during the business day, just give us a call too, if you have any questions, because we can sometimes answer those questions that the finance department in Sherburne can. So, good. Thank you for doing that. It actually makes the process much smoother on our end, too, because everything goes over to Town Hall, and we know it's there.
Yeah.
So that's great. So thank you for that.
So Dawn, you can just keep talking, because now we're going to get to the FY19 budget closeout.
Exactly. So we use your September meeting to sort of bring closure to the fiscal year that ended in June 30. So you have a summary statement of where, how we ended up with both your salaries, your operating expenses, and your out-of-district expenses. You will see that we were really close to the, where we were supposed to be, we were within $20,000. That is pretty tight. Just to give you some perspective for the new members, in fiscal year 18, actually was a year where we had some unexpected out-of-district expenses, and we had to go forward to the town and ask for additional funds. So that was not a good year. We ended that year, though, only $12,000 in the negative compared to what we asked. So we were able not to have to use as many, as much funds as we asked the town for. Last year, you ended, for fiscal year 18, we ended with a little under $50,000. So that's the window that we operate a really tight budget in Sherburne. So any little unexpected event does usually have an impact on us. So that's just a setting scenario for, again, for everyone. But we do, we manage it really tightly, and I think we do a good job. So our goal is to always not have too much money to give back, right? But also, at the same time, never have to go back to the town for additional money. So I think we ended the year with some negative in the salaries, but we were able to explain, a big piece of that was just how we accounted for some special ed services. So if you peruse down to your expenditures and see fed services supplies, how we had a surplus of $35,000 that goes up against and counteracts your 36 negative on your teachers' fed. So that's just a matter of how we accounted for it. Other than that, there were a few ins and outs. We did have some special request, or some special needs for students for educational assistance. So we did end up hiring more educational assistants last year than we had in the budget. And that's why you see almost $45,000 of over expenditure in that arena. But we were able to make up for it in, if you have the top part of your salaries, just so you know, were some unfilled positions in some, like tech, IT, we had some unfilled positions. We had some staffing changes, so you had a little bit of surplus in your teachers. So any, we budget, we build our budget, as you know, basically based on our staff that we have in November. So a lot can happen before we show back up the next year in September. So some of those are just, depending on who left and who stayed versus how we thought it was going to turn out. So on the expenditure side, if you take your $42,000 and back out that special ed, we're really right at budget, some various minimal expenditure variances. And we had a really good year for out-of-district. We are actually under budget by about $30,000, which has been a great place to be for Sherburne. So in total, again, we just had, we have $20,000 to turn back to the town. And at the bottom, you'll also see that we ended up getting circuit breaker reimbursement at 74.4%, which is almost close to the 75% that's mandated by states. So little by little, they are getting this there, which is very helpful, because we build our budget with a little bit less of a number, so that gives us a little extra funds to deal with. And we ended up using about $5,000 more in circuit breaker than we had budgeted, but that's just a matter of how we decided to utilize the funds. Any questions on sort of the summary statement for fiscal year 19? The other thing that's in your packet is your special revenue revolving statement as of June 30. So this is the full year activity for the various funds. I tried to add some detail in the report. One thing I did want to highlight, it's both in the report and under the notes, is that we have begun the process, or the policy of charging our after-school program for rental of space here. For many, you may not know, but the region under Community Ed actually runs the SITA program here. And since I've been in this position, we've been thinking about, does it make sense if there's not something charged to that program to come back to the school for using the space, because the revenue goes to the region? So we did institute a rental fee for both Chicering and Pine Hill last year for those after-school programs that go into their building funds. So we assessed SITA $15,000 of rent that went into your building fund, which will definitely help in the future with things that we need to take care of on a capital standpoint. And we also used the building rental funds last year for the access, access control, the security system. So that was, that allows us to take care of some emergency needs as they arise and not have to go through the capital process. So that was also one of the ways we used the building rental fund, which I wanted to let, remind the committee, obviously. You knew about it when we did it, but I think it's just a nice little summary. The circuit breaker, remember, we've been not spending it down to zero. So of that $144,000, just also too, for advisory to understand, we prepaid $15,000 of tuition in '19 for fiscal year '20 that needs to be backed out of the $144,000, but that's included in the $65,000. So of the $144,000, we said $65,000 was going to go towards your fiscal year '20 budget. That's how we pulled, in addition to the incoming circuit breaker money. And then we have started charging some in-district expenses to your circuit breakers. So two educational assistants actually also get charged to that circuit breaker fund. We waited until we had a year's worth of money. So we would never budget to do that unless we knew we had the money in hand. So that's why we carry forward that balance. So we're not reliant on what circuit breaker is going to be next year. We already know we have the money. So that's a safety net that we've devised. So taking all that into account, I let the committee know that you've got $20,000 of unreserved circuit breaker that we do have in case some unexpected expenses come up in the special education arena.
Okay. Any questions? Linda, any questions about circuit breakers? All right. So is that it for you, Dawn?
That's it. And on the fiscal year '20 budget capital update, you'll get your first financial report at the October meeting. We're just running the first payrolls and getting all the encumbrances set up, so it's a little premature to roll out a monthly financial statement this early. But I can report that your capital projects, which you can see on the warrant for the $65,000, were the kindergarten floors and the library carpeting that we did. And I was going to offer, after the meeting, if anyone hasn't seen those areas, Barbara said that she would let us run through and just take a peek. If you haven't been in the library, it absolutely, Lori Ryan's done a fabulous job. It's, I wish, I really do hope we have before and after pictures, because it is amazing to see. And if you remember, we used one of your revolving funds to buy the remaining book carts that we need to just give that a nice updated look. So that was a wonderful summer project. And then the kindergarten wing was carpeted and tiled, and really, and painted.
And painted.
Courtesy of our custodial staff, who did a fabulous job. So Peter and his staff were really busy this summer, but I think great strides were made in continuing to bring this building up. It's unbelievable, the age of this building and how good it looks. So kudos to everyone who works here and then puts all their heart into making this place where it is.
And a small little makeover in the teachers' rooms in the next week.
In the next week, exactly. Touch and go there, but
Just to sink in some cupboards, but it's
But definitely
Much needed.
Yeah.
So, how old is this building?
So it's different pieces, right? So the oldest part of it is from the
The library wing came in, I think, '69.
'69. But the base is from, I have
The rock out front, I believe, is 1958.
Yep. And then the one wing's from the 90s.
Yeah, we're 61 years old.
Yeah.
Almost 62.
So I just said that the library wing looks brand new with the work that's been done, because I was here when it was brand new.
Yeah.
And that was a while ago.
Even eight years ago, when I started, it was all gray. It was like a parking garage in Boston. It was just gray cinder block.
So, so nice.
Yeah.
Beautiful. All right, Dawn. And I worked in the library this morning. It was fantastic. It was gorgeous. I have a question for you, because our janitors do work so hard. They go above and beyond. That's why the building looks brand new to me. It looks really nice. The landscaping out front, because I know that's not, they upkeep it, but there's just some overgrowth. And I didn't know if we could get some money out of our capital fund or something to bring in maybe a company?
We have, we have money in the operating budget to take care of stuff like that. So we've actually already talked about, we have a great service that we've used at the region, that we will, they've already done some tree work here in the previous, but I think we're going to get them to give us a quote to trimming back some of the trees and just taking care of some of the areas that we just don't have time to do with our own manpower.
It was a pretty strong growing season, I think.
It was. Well, I can tell you, my yard is just crabgrass from all the rain, and everything grew up. And I noticed the rhododendrons, they're kind of creeping up over the windows. I don't want, I want them to still have, you know, lots of nice natural light. I don't want, I want them to still have, you know, lots of nice natural light, so I think we kind of need to give them all a nice haircut.
Yeah, yeah. And we just did some of that major trimming at the region, so we felt comfortable with the service that we would use if they know what they're doing. And we're definitely looking to get some quotes to see what we would have to invest to get, to get them here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So next we go to the consent agenda. If everybody can remember what happened in June, we have to approve the minutes from June 10th. I read through them and from what my brain can recollect, it all looked correct to me. Did anyone read it and have any other takeaway on it? If no one saw anything that needed to be corrected, we just need a motion to approve the minutes of June 10th, 2019 from our Sherburne School Committee.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. And second?
Second.
Thanks, Amanda. All in favor? All right. Thank you. So that is done. Also, if you will look, there is a donation from the CSA that Dr. Brown has respectfully submitted that for us to vote on to accept the gift of a new swing set. Anyone who went to the gala last year knows that, or the auction knows that it was a very generous donation from the parents and the swing set is valued at $12,000 from the Pine Hill CSA, which was a very successful event and thankfully, our kids are benefiting. So if I could have a motion to vote favorably to accept that gift. Mike? And second?
Second.
Megan, thank you. All in favor? And I would love to thank the CSA for a wonderful event and for always improving the playground space and just any space that needs some extra here and there.
And I don't think the swings have sat idle since the first day of school.
I have to say, my fifth grader says the little kids love those swings. I think he's a little bit jealous because he's like, it's really, and I noticed he got on them the other day. He was excited. Okay, so finally, the meeting calendar, we'll move on down to that. Did every, has everyone seen, I printed off an extra one. I was looking at it and all our meetings are set out. We have one more meeting than Chickering does, than Dover does. And it says in parentheses, Tuesday, February 11th, 2020, if necessary. If it's okay with you, Paul, I think we plan on erring on the side of not needing the meeting unless something is occurring where.
Needed for budget. That's the only reason we potentially.
If we need it for budget.
But the same could happen with Chickering, so.
Right.
It would just be called.
Right. So anyway, so my takeaway from that is put that in pencil on your calendar. Hopefully, it won't be needed. And if it is needed, we'll say we are going to. If not, let's just assume it's not there. Okay? So hopefully, we'll have our budget square and ready to go.
Right, that'll be your, almost, you'll get your budget in November.
Right.
So it'll, gives you an opportunity to have those two months. We'll see what happens. Give it in January. And then a lot of times, we don't know really how to finalize until we get closer to March anyway.
Exactly.
That's the issue where the February one, sometimes there's really no new information to share.
So I just wanted to put that on your radar, that it is our hope that we have it all done. But that just shows you how soon the budgets happen. I mean, starting in November, people say, well, when do you need to know numbers? You know, it's, it's early. It's very early. So moving on from there, the subcommittee assignments, if you'll look too, just to make sure, and I just looked, I am the only policy person. I don't know why. So I might have to pull somebody in if we're going to do some other policy work. But you can look on these and see where you were, where you were placed.
Can I raise one possible shift on that, Angie?
Yes.
And I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to talk to you about this, so feel free to say no. But Nancy has been involved with some of the, the other groups in town that are working constantly on calendars and communications. And I didn't realize that, otherwise I would have suggested that you ask her to be on that communications task force. Because it's you now.
Yes.
I don't know how attached to that you are.
I am not. I'm not married to it, if you're asking me. It would be just fine for me if Nancy wishes to take that. Nancy, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, wonderful. I will send this to Cheryl then.
Okay.
Happily.
Awesome. That's good, because she has input that we could really use.
Will you join me on policy? Great. And Amanda's going to join me on policy, just so that I have, we have two eyes to look at some things and we'll just bring you all some information and then we can decide. It may be that nothing happens. This is, it is what it is. But we, I always think more information's better than not enough and we'll just give it to you and then we'll work from there. Thank you, Amanda. And thank you, Nancy. Thanks for bringing that to my attention, Dr. Kiyoku. I appreciate that. And for your reading pleasure, and if you, if there's anything on the subcommittee that you were like, eh, I wasn't that comfortable with that, I try to put people where they said they wanted to go. But if there's something that you're dying to do or you're like, oh, this really isn't my forte, just let me know and we can adjust. The regional school committee minutes are in your packet from May 7th of 2019 as well as the Dover School Committee Minutes, May 20th. And that is for your reading pleasure for later, if you have read it already.
Can I just ask one question? Just, I mean, this is the personnel committee. What is that committee?
That's just if we have any really personal questions with regards to Pine Hill. I mean, it's not, I mean, we don't get into any.
It's, if anyone wants to use a sick bank.
Right.
Or if there's something that Andrew needs to consult with, personnel, it's, I think it meets like once every two years. But there are instances where sick bank, I think, is the one that I think of the most that has to bring that committee together to approve you.
Okay.
Various sick banks that the, the, the bar can handle.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question on the calendar? So do you want me to ask Cheryl to take that off that February 11th or do you want to leave it as is?
I would say take it off and then we'll put it on if we need it, is what I would suggest.
That's perfect. Just because I'm making notes on things that I need her to change.
Yes, well, I could, yes. And then our final item is items for the October 15th meeting. That is our last item for the evening. October will.
I will say that one thing we typically, we started to try to do is that's an opportunity for the school committee to bring forward any budget concerns that they'd like to see us incorporate into the first draft because then you're a November draft. And then you get your, November meeting, you get your first draft. So if you're looking at any new initiatives or concerns that you have, it's your opportunity to share it with us before we bring forward the first pass.
Did you vote to the consent agenda?
We did that.
You did vote it, okay.
Yeah, we did that. We did the minutes, right? That's what, that's what that was.
That and the.
Yeah, and we did the donations.
So really for the, just so, for the, just a little trick, for the consent agenda, you're approving everything listed under there with one vote. So the consent agenda means you don't really, it's not, and I didn't normally needs to be discussed, but it's a lot of information that should just be a roll call. So when you've approved the consent agenda, you're approving everything that's listed under there.
Listed underneath it.
With the vote, did we have that?
Yeah, well, they voted, she voted on the minutes.
I voted on the minutes.
If you phrase it as a consent. And just saying you did the consent agenda, that covers the minutes and the donation.
Okay. Because I did it in two parts.
Right.